Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome to you to the Canton Township Board of Trustees, October 14th, 2025, regular board meeting at 7 o'clock PM. Can we all please rise with a pledge of allegiance? And if our Yak team would like to lead us in that, please do so.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Seagres, can you please take roll call?
Trustee Ansari.
Good evening.
Trustee Borninski.
Good evening.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
And it appears as though trustee Ganguly is traveling. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Seagres is in attendance. And Supervisor Graham Hudak.
Good evening. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with taking item G2 and pulling that to a future meeting and then adding a resolution, I'm sorry, a presentation, a short presentation from Andrew Ambrose of the Wayne Westland Community Schools, he's a trustee.
So moved.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, why don't we begin with Mr. Ambrose? If you want to talk, he's a Wayne Westland Community School trustee and as you know, that's one of our communities in Canton Township.
Good evening. I want to thank the board for giving me a few minutes to talk tonight about a ballot proposal that'll be on this November's ballot for the Wayne Westland Community Schools. This ballot proposal is a bond for $125 million to update our schools. It's a nuts and bolts type bond. It's for roofs, parking lots, it's for the infrastructure. And where this really affects Canton is in 2018, we had a bond proposal that was supposed to cover a lot of this. During that bond proposal, though, Walker Winter Elementary was left off because the district at the time had plans to close Walker Winter. Last year, the board, before I was elected, decided to keep Walker Winter open. And so none of the improvements were added to Walker Winter. So a portion of this bond is actually going to update Walker Winter with a new HVAC system. If you've been in the building, heat works okay. Air conditioning doesn't work throughout the entire building. There are some other improvements that we need in that building from a safety standpoint also. But the infrastructures we're going to focus on even throughout the rest of the district is our roofs, our parking lots, updating our information technologies so students have internet access available throughout the buildings. We're updating all of our classroom furnitures to have a more collaborative environment instead of the individual desks that the students have. And we're basically calling it keeping our students safe, warm, and dry. And how this is going to be funded is as the 2018 tax bond rolls out, we're just going to keep the same rate and carry it over. So what you're paying now is what you're going to pay again in your property taxes if this bond passes.
Okay.
So.
Anyone have any questions? Kate?
Not a question, but I wanted to thank you for coming to our meeting. I'm a former school board person myself. And, you know, I wanted to make sure that everyone understood why this is relevant to Canton Township. Walker Winter Elementary is in Canton. And we do have some areas of Canton that attend Wayne Westland Schools. So this is really important. So I thank you for coming.
So for those who don't know, because Canton has three different school districts, even if your child doesn't go to Wayne Westland Schools, if they go to Career Technical Education, they do attend the Career Technical Education Center in Wayne Westland, which is right next door to John Glenn High School, so.
What made the change? It's great that you're opening Walker Winter again. What made the change of heart?
Enrollment. So the problem with Walker Winter is most of the students that go there are, for lack of a better term, transient. Especially that South, the Michigan Avenue 275 corner where the mobile home parks are, tend to be very transient. And so enrollment goes up and down, up and down. So the thought was if they closed it in 18 when enrollment was down, we could save some money because the district was in a little bit of a financial distress. And we have determined the other elementary schools no longer have the room. And there are things happening in Canton, especially within the school district, with some housing development that's going to necessitate that we need to keep this building open. And by the way, I am a Canton resident. And when I was running, I was pushing to try to keep Walker Winter open. So my kids went there and so it has a special place in my heart.
I liked it. The reading programs are fun to do there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I'm just going to quickly read it. So whereas domestic violence is a pervasive public health and safety issue that affects individuals and families in every community, regardless of age, gender, race, socioeconomic status, or background. Whereas according to the Michigan State Police's 2023 crime report, over 64,000 incidents of domestic violence were reported statewide, highlighting the critical need for continued prevention, education, and support services across the state. Whereas October has been nationally recognized as Domestic Violence Awareness Month since 1987, a time to raise awareness, honor survivors, and remember those who have lost their lives to domestic violence. Whereas Canton Township is committed to supporting survivors of domestic violence and addressing the root causes of abuse through community-based strategies and trauma-informed public safety initiatives. Whereas Canton Township has established an embedded social worker program within the Canton Public Safety Department, connecting trained mental health professionals with law enforcement to provide on-support crisis intervention and long-term care coordination for individuals and families impacted by domestic violence and related issues. And whereas the Township of Canton is hosting a candlelight vigil on October 22nd, 2025, to raise awareness, remember victims, and stand in solidarity with survivors of domestic violence in our community and beyond. Now therefore be it that resolved. The Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton hereby proclaims October 25 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Canton Township, Michigan, and encourages all residents, businesses, schools, faith-based organizations, and community partners to participate in awareness and prevention activities, including the October 22nd Candlelight Vigil, and reaffirms its commitment to addressing domestic violence through innovative programs such as the Embedded Social Worker Initiative, continued collaboration with local state and state agencies, and unwavering support for survivors and their families.
Support.
Supported. Motion made and supported by trustee Borninski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Great, thank you. Something we really need, especially after today. Okay, then we have on the agenda the swearing in of the Youth Advisory Council. I believe Clerk Seagres is going to work with that. How would you like to do that? Have everybody come up?
Nope. You can have the entire... Well, we have officers. Yeah. Why don't we have President and Vice President come up first? Changing leadership. All right.
Okay, don't go anywhere. Don't go anywhere. Everybody stay up here. We're going to do a group shot. Board, want to stand up here? Congratulations. Congratulations, everybody. Okay, next we have public comment on agenda items only for three minutes. Public comment on agenda items only. If you want to go to the podium for agenda items only. And I'll also check on Zoom to see if we have anyone. Public comment on agenda items only. There's one attendee. If you would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand electronically. Okay, I will close the public comment on agenda items. We have the regular public comment at the end. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
One moment, real quick. I am having a hard time. Crashed. Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the minutes from September 9th, 2025.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Then we have the payment of bills.
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by trustee Borninski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now we have our lengthy consent calendar.
Because of the previous meeting, I did not preload all of the motions into the minutes. So we are... I'm two motions behind right now.
No problem.
Okay, Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented with item C1, which is to consider approving a three-year software subscription renewal for Clear Pro Flex. Item C2, consider approving a one-year software subscription renewal for Lefte. Item C3, consider authorization of permit for private fireworks display at BAPS Hindu Temple. For Diwali coming up, that'll be exciting. Item C4, consider awarding a contract and purchase order to replace the pro shop exterior doors and kitchen door at Fellows Creek Golf Course. C5, consider awarding a contract and purchase order for new vinyl plank flooring at the gun range. Item C6, consider awarding a contract and purchase order for replacing the exterior building accent lighting at the administration building. Item C7, consider authorizing agreement with McFear Sun LLC for tactical performance training for fire. Item C8, consider awarding a contract and purchase order to replace the rooftop units seven and eight at the administration building. C9, consider increasing an existing purchase order to Vanguard Fire and Security Systems, along with the amendment to the 2025 fire budget. C10, consider approval of a purchase order increase for food and beverage at Pheasant Run Golf Club. C11, consider approving an increase in the blanket purchase order issued to Bound Tree Medical LLC. C12, consider approving an increase to the blanket purchase order issued to JMB Medical Supply Company. C13, consider increasing purchase order to Redondo Construction Incorporated for the 2025 sidewalk replacement program. C14, consider waiving the bidding process and approval of the emergency repair of fire engine 17-E5. C15, consider a request to approve a letter of agreement between Canton Township and the IAFF Local 2289 Fire Contract. Fire. Item C16, consider waiving the bidding process, awarding a contract and purchase order for the addition of asphalt pathways at Preservation Park.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G1, consider approval to hire consultant for the Community Development Block Grant Five-Year Consolidated Plan.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award the contract for the CDBG Five-Year Consolidated Plan Annual Action Plan and the Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Plan to waitrim in the amount of $39,400.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Five-Year Consolidated Plan Annual Action Plan and Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing AFFH requirements are mandated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for local governments that receive federal entitlement funding. These plans consolidate the planning and application processes for HUD-funded programs, including the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Home Investment Partnerships Program, HOME, Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, HOPWA. Since the Charter Township of Canton is a direct recipient of CDBG funding for many years, we solicited proposals from firms to provide professional planning services in the development of these plans. These plans will address HUD's goals of decent housing, suitable living environments, and expanded economic opportunities and give Canton Township its roadmap on how to use CDBG dollars to best meet the needs of its citizens. Extensive research, writing, and community involvement are necessary for this comprehensive plan. Township staff reviewed six submissions and the scoring analysis was provided. Online, we have, we do have Wendy. But Wendy, I don't know if you wanted to say something or Finance Director.
No, I think that was pretty detailed, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Board have any questions or comments on CDBG or the funding? We have to do this every five years. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Item G3, consider authorization to purchase new cardio and strength equipment.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve one purchase order to Direct Fitness Solutions for the purchase of strength equipment totaling $24,120, and a second purchase order to All Pro for the purchase of cardio equipment totaling $22,054.50, along with the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by trustee Borninski. An invitation to bid was solicited on July 31st, 2025, for new cardio and strength equipment for the Summit on the Park Fitness Center. From this solicitation, five fitness equipment providers submitted bids. Of the five submissions, Direct Fitness Solutions was the only vendor to offer pre-course strength equipment, which Summit users prefer. All Pro offered the lowest cost of cardio equipment, including trade-ins, as well as additional new step equipment. Therefore, Leisure Services recommends purchasing all strength equipment from Direct Fitness Solutions for a total cost of $24,120, including trade-ins, and cardio equipment from All Pro for a total cost of $22,054.50, also including trade-ins. A budget amendment is necessary. Director LaFever, do you want to add anything?
Just that this is regular practice. A lot of these pieces, actually all of these pieces are aging. Some, a couple of them are as old as 2013. Most of the other ones are all 2017, from 2017, and then ones from 2018. So most of the pieces that they're replacing are aging quite a bit.
Does the board have any questions or comments? Michael?
How many pieces of equipment are we replacing? And you said aging. Do you remember what, like, what would be some of the ages of some of the equipment?
I think six or seven in total that we're replacing with this particular RBA.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Two treadmills. Let me see. Oh, new strength and cardio equipment purchased in '24, but didn't arrive till January '25. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, it's listed in action, I think. Six hundred... Oh, it says second purchase for cardio equipment. So there's a couple POs being issued. Okay.
Two of them, right?
Comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item, G4.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the proposed contract amendment to the original agreement with Partners in Architecture, or PIA for short, increase the above purchase order with PIA by $158,190 and the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. On October 24th, 2023, the Township Board authorized an agreement for architectural and engineering services for fire station number four with Partners in Architecture. Since then, the township was made aware of the discovery of wetlands in the original proposed station site. PIA has been working with the township and environmental consultant to evaluate multiple options and reduce the overall wetland impact. After several meetings and months of additional work, the overall site layout was drastically changed, shifting the building to the west and reducing the overall disturbed area to less than one acres. These changes require additional design and engineering work, as well as geotechnical investigation and site surveying. So the Canton Fire Department is requesting to amend the original agreement with PIA to increase the cost of additional services provided. The additional cost associated with these services is $158,190. The department is requesting an amendment to the 2025 fire budget to increase the original purchase order with PIA to cover these costs. Chief Stockline, do you want to add anything?
Very difficult project, to say the least. But we do have some good news that the draft permit from Eagle has come through. So we're happily expecting that to be on our desk within the next five days. And then we can get that approved and we can start moving forward. But there was a lot of work that had to be redone with moving that station to the west, the 400 yards or whatever we had to do. And this is the result of that. So we'll be taking that from the state grant.
Questions or comments? Getting closer. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item 5.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of 2026 plant protectants and fertilizers for Pheasant Run Golf Club for a total amount of $114,884.58.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. To maintain and provide high-quality grass and turf at Pheasant Run Golf Club, the Leisure Services staff must purchase plant protectant and fertilizers on an annual basis. In September 2025, the Leisure Services Department issued an invitation to bid for the purchase of plant protectants and fertilizers to be used in 2026. As a result, seven companies submitted bids with four qualifying companies providing the lowest bids for specific products. The Leisure Services Department recommends approving purchase orders to the following companies. Site One Landscape Supply for a total cost of $22,043.32. Target Specialty Products for a total cost of $20,354. Advanced Turf Solutions for a total cost of $36,375.84. And Nutrien for a total cost of $36,111.42. The sum of the four purchase orders will be $114,884.58. To take advantage of the significant savings due to early purchasing, products will be purchased in 2025 and paid for in 2026. We do know that our golf courses are well-used. Director LaFever, do you want to add anything?
Nothing to add, but happy to take any questions.
Questions from the board? Kate?
Yes, so I think this is what you did because you've done it in years past, but you took like the lowest-priced items from each particular vendor. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so that's why there's just so many vendors.
Yes, correct, yep.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G6. Okay. G5, we just finished, and G6, not coming up though for some reason. Oh. G6, consider approval of amended professional services agreement for public transit needs.
Madam Supervisor, Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the amended purchase order and professional services agreement with OHM for the regional public transit needs assessment and implementation strategy project in an amount not to exceed $223,945, with a non-reimbursable increase of $10,000, and a reimbursable increase not to exceed $98,000, subject to approval of the amended contract by Township Legal Counsel and the required associated budget amendment.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. In early 2025, the Michigan Legislature adopted Public Act 236, which prohibits municipalities in Wayne County from opting out of regional transit and authorizes a countywide village vote to all county residents to fund the regional transit system. In anticipation of the 2026 vote and supported by feedback from Canton residents during the master plan public engagement events and activities, Canton Planning Division staff retained OHM advisors to assist with transit planning consulting services in developing a public transit needs assessment and implementation strategy for Canton Township. In July of '25, the Canton Township Board of Trustees approved OHM advisors to assist the Planning Division in developing a public transit needs assessment and strategy. The approved project scope and budget was designed exclusively for Canton Township. However, Planning Division staff engaged in discussions with several western Wayne County municipalities about partnering to expand the project scope into a region-wide assessment. Each participating municipality will financially contribute to the expanded scope with Canton Township serving as a fiduciary. An amended professional services agreement will be reviewed by the township's legal counsel. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. As some of you know, we started this process of creating a plan. It also came out of our master plan, the master plan process, too. So this is Canton Township taking, showing leadership role in dealing with western Wayne County, utilizing some of the assets we have that, I know that Treasurer Slavens knows it very well with Nankin Transit. So we'll be leveraging, leveraging that, that asset, and also with our surrounding communities to have the best transit plan that we have, that we need, that we need for our community. So this is the next step in that process. Also, I should mention, Community Planner Patrick Sloan's here. Also, to answer any questions, I know this is coming out of his division. Thank you.
Any questions from anyone? Patrick, do you want to add anything?
Nothing else to add.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Devin, just to let you know, oh, there, you see it, okay. I was just about to let you know, okay. Item G7, consider site plan for Canton Township Fire Station Number Four. Yeah, it's been frozen for a while.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve Resolution Number 25-31 to approve the site plan for Canton Township Fire Station Number Four on planning application number 138-S-P-X-8189.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Branninsky. As we've talked about, for many years, Canton Township has planned for a fourth fire station in the southeast part of the community. The construction of a fourth fire station in Canton Township is in Canton Township's community strategic plan and the Fire Department's five-year strategic plan. The proposed location for Fire Station Number Four is on a 16.83-acre township-owned site on the south side of Michigan Avenue, west of Lily Road, with approximately 25% of emergency services calls coming from the southeastern quadrant of Canton. A fire station in this area will reduce response times nearby. At its meeting on September 8, 2025, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the Canton Township Fire Station Number Four site plan. Now, this one's under both Director Norwood and Chief Stockline. Do you have any comments?
Just going back to, we're very excited to get this moving. And I believe that we'll probably have a, RBA in front of you for approval for a contractor, awarding a contractor here as soon as we get the permits back. And then by March, we should be able to start digging, so.
Do you have anything, Director Norwood?
I don't think, anything to add, though. Community Planner Patrick Sloan can also answer any questions, but it's been, it's gonna be a great project for the township, well-needed.
Patrick, do you have any comments?
No additional comments. The site plan is in really great shape, and the Planning Commission enthusiastically recommended approval. So any modifications from here on out, for the most part, we think can be administrative. So the plan is in good shape. I'm happy to take any questions.
Our YAC team, do you have any questions? Do you have any comments from the Planning Commission?
Uh, no.
Oh, you don't, okay, sorry. Okay, good.
I don't have any comments from the Planning Commission, but excited to move this forward. So, once we start digging in, you said March, what's the anticipated time for the project to be completed?
We're expecting about 11 months.
11 months.
From the time they start digging.
Okay, cool, thanks.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. This is exciting, we're moving closer. Item G8, consider plan development district amendment for Fillmore Place.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve Resolution to approve Amendment Number Two to the Fillmore Place Plan Development District, planning application number 125-P-D-D-A-8608.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. In 2020, the Fillmore Place Plan Development District PDD and site plan were approved, which is a development of 504 apartment units on approximately 97.3 acres located on the west side of Beck Road between Michigan Avenue and Geddes Road. Since the PDD and site plan were approved, the applicant has obtained the necessary permits to commence construction, and several buildings have been finished, excuse me, so far. In 2023, the First Amendment to the Fillmore Place PDD was approved to divide one parcel into three parcels for financing purposes. No site development changes were approved at that time, and the three approved parcels continue to function as a cohesive development in accordance to the original approval in 2020. At this time, a Second Amendment to the Fillmore Place PDD is proposed to change the number of dwelling units and residential building types on the project site to replace 59 attached single-family residential units and 192 single-family townhouses units on the west side of the development, with 100 detached single-family residential units, a proposed net reduction of 151 units. The proposed changes will result in modification from zoning ordinance requirements. At its meeting on September 8, 2025, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the PDD amendment. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything, anything to add, but Community Planner Patrick Sloan is also here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Any additions?
Just a couple of items to note from this application. As you had noted, it's a net reduction of 151 units in the development, and primarily it's to respond to market demand for more detached, single-family lots that are, in this case, of a smaller size, smaller than typical, single-family detached, detached lots in Canton. Although there are fewer units and less impermeable surfaces, we believe the stormwater system is the same size, so less impermeable surface contributing to the same stormwater pond that's designed to hold a lot more. It also results in less traffic. Speaking of traffic, there is a cross-connection shown in the southwest corner of that site to the adjacent site to the west. The adjacent site to the west is Woodbridge, and in its southeast corner, the Township Board will be seeing a plan within the next few weeks that shows some amendments to Woodbridge that will complete a connection into that corner. At the very least, it would be for emergency vehicles, but it'll allow for cross-connections between the developments and result in some better response times as a result of these two amendments. So that concludes our general synopsis of the development, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Summer, anything for the Planning Commission meeting?
Nothing to add beyond what's in the Planning Commission minutes in the board packet.
So YAC team have any questions or comments? Board?
Yes, kind of naive question, but the single-family houses that are replacing the ones that they're not going to do, are those also going to be rentals?
The intent will be for those to be for-sale units. They will be site condominiums, so they'll have their own yard. Each yard will belong to the, the home that's associated there, so it won't be a common lot. Those types of units will tend to be more owner-occupied. I don't think there's an intent to prohibit rentals, but I think predominantly it'll be owner-occupied. At the Planning Commission, when it was asked of the applicant, the estimated price points, the applicant noted probably anywhere from the low fours up to the low 500s. So intent is for-sale.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering, because it's replacing townhouses that I assume were going to be rental properties.
Yeah, the original intent, when the project was approved in 2020, I think the intent was for all 504 units to be rental.
Okay, thank you.
Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G9, consider approving the Merit Commission recommendation for the reclassification of Community Development Director.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the Merit Commission recommendation to reclassify the position of Community Development Director Grade 223 to the position of Leisure Services and Community Development Director Grade 223 on the non-union salary grade scale.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Branninsky. Director Greg Hoenberger resigned his position as Director of Canton Leisure Services after 22 years of exemplary service to the residents of Canton Township. As a result of his resignation, the township elected to combine the responsibilities of Leisure Services and Community Development under the leadership of one director. Accordingly, a request is being made to reclassify Director John LaFever to the position of Director of Leisure Services and Community Development. Director LaFever currently serves as a Director of Community Development, and he previously spent six years as a Deputy Director of Leisure Services. The community development job description has been updated to reflect the expanded responsibilities and duties that incorporate leisure services. If approved, the position will be retitled to Leisure Services and Community Development Director and factored at Grade 223 of the non-union merit wage scale. The position will remain exempt. Retitling of the position and the reclassification were approved by the Merit Commission at the September 23, 2025 Merit Commission meeting. Director Howard, do you want to add anything?
Director LaFever has taken on this responsibility already, and has been working in both of these positions and filling dual, dual roles during this time since Director Hoenberger's resignation.
Questions or comments? Yes.
You think you could have added some more words to the title? As clerk, I have one syllable in my title, and I, now I'm very jealous because you've got Community Development and Leisure Services Director. Perhaps another word might...
Wait till you see the new name of the department.
Is it completely different than the other? That'd be interesting.
I think we should add awesome to the beginning.
Yeah, awesome. The awesome Canton Township.
Teasing. John was at the DiValli event. What?
Any other questions or comments? John's been doing a great job. All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G10, approval of purchase order for Canton Dog Park Improvements. I'll be happy about that.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the bid process and approve the related budget amendment and a purchase order to Rotundo Construction Corporation for Dog Park Improvements in an amount not to exceed $23,000.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. For most of its existence, the Canton Dog Park has faced numerous challenges, including inadequate shade, poor drainage, muddy grounds, and others. Over the past year, staff had met with dog park users on multiple occasions to help identify priority areas to be addressed. As a result, it was determined that the gate entrances and designated shade areas were deemed the highest priority for users, allowing for more seasonal use in areas that tend to receive more wear and tear. The Canton Leisure Services Department worked with engineering to solicit, a quote from the township's approved concrete service provider, Rotundo Construction Corp. Rotundo has recently awarded the bid for Canton Sidewalk Program and agreed to honor the exact unit price as previously submitted. As a result, and to take advantage of efficiencies, Leisure Services is requesting that the bid process be waived for this particular project. Rotundo provided a quote for the installation of new concrete paths and walkways, as well as the removal of two pavilion structures for $19,000. An additional $4,000 is being included to allow Rotundo to cover additional quantities as needed for unforeseen conditions, bringing the total purchase to an amount not to exceed $23,000. A budget amendment is necessary. Director LaFever, do you want to add anything?
We have a lot of people very excited for this improvement out at the dog park. So this will improve, this will add concrete to our gate entrances, which, as you can imagine, with lots of dogs coming in and out, makes those areas very muddy. So lots of people are very excited about this, or have been asking for this for, for quite a while. So this will be a great improvement to the park. The Youth Advisory Council had, had submitted a question in advance, asking how long, if, if there is an estimate, how long will, is it estimated, estimated that these repairs for the park will last? Really, you know, with concrete, right? It can be anywhere from 15 to 25 years. You think about your sidewalks or your driveways, so that would be the hope. And then the other question from the council was, is there a possibility for these repairs to address the shade concerns mentioned in the RBA? Not this particular improvement. This won't address the shade concerns, but we're hoping further ones will. We have planted a lot of trees around the edge of the park that we hope will continue to grow in and, and help provide shade. There are a couple of permanent shade pavilion structures at the park that will remain. So we have tried to add those amenities to help improve that. But this particular solution won't address that any further, but it will be a huge upgrade overall.
Questions or comments? Where are the dogs? They should be here.
Well, they would, they would be if we asked.
Okay, that's true.
It mostly just a comment that, you know, I'm a former dog park member, and one of the reasons that I did not renew my membership was because my dog would get so muddy there. So I'm really glad to hear about this. I also had the same question as the Youth Advisory Council about the shade, especially with the removal of the pavilions. So looking forward to hear more, hearing more on that. Soon, I hope.
Let me, and I want to clarify that, too. We listed them as pavilions, so the two that are being removed are actually pergolas that are out there.
Yeah.
And those two pergolas were built by Eagle Scouts some years ago, and those have been weathered and are in pretty rough shape. So that's the reason those are coming out. The foundations have gone on those, because they're not concrete foundations. So that's why those are being removed with this project. So there, there are two permanent ones that are staying.
Okay.
So these are just the pergola ones that are being removed at this time. And those don't provide a whole lot of shade as they are, so.
Anything's better than that.
But we are open to Eagle Scouts building new ones, and we are talking to a group currently to do that.
Cool, thank you.
I apologize, I don't know if the YAC team wants to ask any questions. Oh, they submitted, okay, okay. All right, any other questions or comments?
And I missed earlier, just to clarify, too. I, I had the answer right after Michael asked about the cardio equipment. There were five cardio pieces at the summit being replaced, and seven strength equipment pieces, so quite, quite a few.
Those are always being used.
Very much so. We are busting at the seams right now. Oh, and the dog park also, once this work gets, assuming it's approved and, and work gets done, we will have to close the park for two weeks. So it's anticipated to do it right around the first of November to do that. So just letting you as board members know that the park will have to be closed, and we'll do a few, full communications blitz with that to let, let the members know and make sure we get that work. But obviously, this is a, a, a good thing to do that with. They'll be very pleased to, to hear the work being done.
Are there gonna be communications about, like, alternative spaces, maybe, that you could recommend to residents, or, because folks are gonna get really mad?
Yeah.
What's your suggestion?
Yeah, we don't, well, we don't have
Amory's backyard.
Yeah.
Alternatives. It will be a very short period. It will be a very short period, and this has been a very long awaited improvement, so...
I'm with you.
Yeah, we're, we think they'll be quite happy.
Okay, yeah.
Unlike what Michael said, not at my house. I have a small backyard, very small. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Last item, authorize funding to continue litigation to stop radioactive waste from coming to Wayne County, Michigan.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize funding to continue litigation to prevent radioactive waste from Lewiston, New York, from becoming to Van Buren Township, Michigan. I further move to approve the necessary budget amendment and allow the purchase order to be rolled over into 2026 to cover the anticipated cost.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Wayne Disposal Incorporated, WDI, in Van Buren Township is preparing to take 6,000 cubic soils, yard soils of concrete and 4,000 gallons of groundwater contaminated with radioactive waste from a site in Lewiston, New York, where the Manhattan Project developed the atomic bomb during World War II. Radioactive waste, if imported from New York, has the potential to negatively impact the health and welfare of Canton residents. Wayne County residents and all Michigan residents along with impacting property values in and around the community. There is an injunction in place preventing any waste, this particular waste, from coming to Michigan with the trial date set for early 2026. The cost of this litigation is being shared between Canton, Van Buren Township, Romulus, and Belleville. While the Circuit Court hasn't granted this, has granted this temporary injunction, this litigation continues to prevent future shipments of radioactive waste from entering Michigan. So that's why the trial is coming up, and we are going to ask for no waste like this to come into Michigan. So let's see, let's see.
Deputy Supervisors, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, just that we've been, along with Van Buren Township, Belleville, and Romulus in litigation on this issue for close to a year now, around a year. And Canton Township has actually borne very little cost of that litigation. Van Buren Township has picked up the lion's share of the cost of the litigation over the past year. They're, they've expended somewhere in the neighborhood of $150,000 on this litigation. Canton has expended about $20,000 over the past year. So we're very grateful to have a partner in Van Buren Township, along with the City of Belleville and Romulus in this litigation. I won't go into too much detail because Attorney Grisco from Fosso and Grisco was here a couple of weeks ago and gave the board a comprehensive update on litigation, but thus far, it's been a very successful case. You know, last year, we were able to get a temporary restraining order to prevent the radioactive waste in Lewiston, New York from coming to WDI and Van Buren Township. That temporary restraining order was extended over about a seven or eight month period, which is a really long time for a temporary restraining order to last. We then had a hearing on the merits of the temporary injunction, and we prevailed in that hearing as well. And the judge not only granted a temporary injunction for radioactive waste coming to Van Buren Township from Lewiston, New York, but all T norm, so all low-level radioactive waste from coming to that particular site in Van Buren Township until the hearing on the permanent, the question of a permanent injunction is held, which is set for February of 2026. So we're in the process of preparing for this next leg of the race, and we're hopeful that we'll continue to have success in the Circuit Court. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
I want to ask questions?
Just wondering, I don't see Wayne County on the list of communities that is, that are sharing the cost of the litigation. Are they, is Wayne County participating in the litigation?
Yes, Wayne County is what's called an intervening plaintiff in the litigation. They joined the lawsuit after the temporary restraining order was granted back in October of last year, and they actually have their own law firm, which represents the county, that partners with, with the law firm that the communities have engaged.
Okay, so they have their own costs.
Yes, they're shouldering the burden of their own costs with their own firm, yeah.
Thank you.
Wayne County is actually the ones that provided the expert witnesses at the trial. Yeah, they paid for those, so that helped us. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, now it's time for additional public comments for three minutes. Anyone at the podium would like to get up and have additional public comments? Please do so. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm Greg Green, longtime resident of Canton. I'm here tonight, not really knowing what I can accomplish with this, but I've been giving it a lot of thought because I'm not on my association's board, but I used to be, and my wife has also been. And we both agree that, over the years, Canton neighborhoods have lost their high standing in the relationship with the township and just residents in general. We need help from the township. We used to get it. The township needs to get on back, back on board with the train of better residential community relationship, and I'm going to explain how. Our excellence is diminishing, I believe, and I've talked to other neighborhood representatives, and it's a hard way to be on an association board today. For example, on the Canton website, under the Permits and Applications section, it reads, "Please note, Canton Township does not require an HOA approval from local HOAs prior to issuing residential permits. It is the responsibility of the permit applicant and property owner to obtain all necessary approvals from their HOAs prior to any construction taking place. Canton Township will not issue permit refunds for permits reviewed, issued, and then canceled due to HOA requirements." What this indicates is a priority that the township has removed itself from the very key neighborhood aesthetic process. It enables the homeowners to make changes behind the backs, quote unquote, of their association and put the association behind the eight ball of just aesthetics and general beauty and upkeeping. Not only does the HOA lose the architectural control, the township loses control and revenue like fees and tax assessments because many homeowners ignore both their HOA and the township. Let me give you a little history. When Canton's future was being forecast and planned to transition from a sweet corn farming community to a future thriving suburban environment, many things were the concern of the trustees in the early going. Canton's redevelopment from its farming age to suburban living resulted in large residential subdivision developments, and I was part of that because I was on the Planning Commission, and thus a subsequent HOA necessity. The township has depended on the HOAs and their boards and bylaws for governance that eased the demands on some township resources. And one concern was the availability and assortment of housing price points from starter homes to million-dollar mansions so that families did not leave, need to leave Canton to find homes and live in the economic realm they sought, particularly as their income increased. Another concern was the viability and sustainability of the new neighborhoods, as well as the impact on township services as the population grew. Many of you might remember the late Melissa McLaughlin. She consulted, I consulted with her a long time ago on the history of things, and she had said that they actually talked about this as a reality, that they knew the township was going to increase in population very, very quickly over the years because the farms were being turned over, and that it was possibly going to be a drain on the township resources because of new neighborhoods developing, et cetera, et cetera. I'm in the River Meadow subdivision, and many of you will probably hear on the news tonight. We've, we've hit the news in the wrong way. There was an incident, and I know that police and fire is very aware. I think half the departments were in my neighborhood tonight. We had an incident, but I'm not here about that. We are very pleased with the services the township provides, and we want to see everything continue to develop in a positive way.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Thank you.
Yes.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you. Appreciate it, thank you. Next? Miller?
George Miller, I'm concerned about September 13, '23. The township bought a piece of property, 2132 Sheldon Road, for $85,000. The roundabout was supposed to go in. It's not going in evidently anymore. At the last meeting, when the state was here, M.D., I attended it and asked them. So you bought it, you moved to, approved the purchase, ID 7105701057700. That's 2132 Sheldon. It was authorized, I moved to approve the purchase of that property for the amount of $85,000. Authorized supervisor to sign the documents. Motion by Slavens to approve the purchase of that property I mentioned for the amount of $85,000 authorized by the township. All right, it's a 45 or 55-foot lot. You can't build on it without special permission from the Planning Commission. You ought to know. So you, what do you plan to do with that? Maybe you should go over there and ask the people to refund the money because there's not going to be a roundabout. That's sealed. This could have been bought on ultimate domain after everything went through. After everything was, went through, you could have went in there and put up a price and negotiated a price. But I'd like to know what you're going to do with the, with the property.
Thank you. We have one attendee. I don't see a hand. All right, thank you. Public comments are over. Do we have any administrative comments? Anything from our Yak team back there? Patrick, any comments? Chris? Oh, I'm sorry. John? John was hiding and didn't see. Talk about some of the events coming up because we...
I was going to share a couple of events we just had. We had a very successful trick-or-treat story trail in the park. We had over 1,900 people in the park that day, which was phenomenal. And Trustee Ganguly's not here, but we just celebrated Festival of Lights on Friday night. I know Clerk Seeger was there and can attest. We ran some numbers. We had over 2,000 people there, which was phenomenal. It was a great celebration. So coming off some very successful events, and I also wanted to add, U.S. Board members will see in your monthly packets moving forward, a list of community events that are an invite to you as Board members, so that you'll have them in one spot coming up. So I think you'll enjoy having that. So look for that in future updates that come, they'll come the first of the month.
Of course, we had Oktoberfest with the golf outing. We had 175 golfers there. All right, cool. Thank you. Ed, would you, do you have anything to add? No? Jill? Start down here, summer?
Not much to add. It's fall. Happy almost Halloween.
Thank you. Michael?
We are three weeks away from the special school election where a good portion of Canton Township will have the ability to vote, obviously in the Wayne Westland School District, but also in the Van Buren School District. Those in Canton who live in the Plymouth Canton School District do not have an election. I've already had some people come into the office asking why we didn't send them their ballot. It's because there's nothing to vote for for you. You gotta wait until next year. Sorry. But it's exciting for those who have the opportunity to vote on the two tax questions, who live in those two districts, who will not be having early voting. But Election Day is Tuesday, the 4th.
Thank you. Amara?
Oh, okay. Just that, you know, the weather is a little bit confusing right now. I have my jacket in my car. I don't wear it, but I have the boots. So please make sure to take care of yourselves, listen to your bodies as we are shifting into colder weather and darker days. And I wanted to thank the rest of the board, too, for the resolution earlier this evening around Domestic Violence Awareness Month. If anyone is facing a domestic violence situation, there are hotlines available. Please, please, please reach out to your support systems. Don't let yourself go through that situation if you can help it, and seek out the support that you need. And that's it.
Kate?
It's off and it's on. This court is bothering it. So yes, our resolution tonight on domestic violence was very timely in a bad way. So I just wanted to reach out to everyone in Canton and say, please, if you feel that you are endangered, please get help. There's First Step, there's our police department, there's our embedded social worker. Even you could call the resident advocate, Emma Kramer. There are a number of resources that we have here in Canton that can help. And also just thinking about our community and hoping that everyone knows that we all care for you.
Yeah, I want to say ditto to that, absolutely. Just a quick reminder, this is RSV Awareness Month, so make sure we're keeping our little ones safe and our elderly. Respiratory Care Week, people who love your lungs, will be celebrated the 22nd through the 28th. And then we do have some big changes happening right now in Canton. We're changing the software over, so this week, a lot of folks who've been trying to pay their water bill online aren't able to. It'll be up and running next week, and if you can check out the website, because we'll be having a new IVR number, a little bit of new information regarding this. But once we have the BSA all up and running, it's going to be one portal to be able to pay your taxes, your water bill will be much user-friendly for our residents. So I am looking forward to next week.
October is also Disability Awareness Month, so happy Disability Awareness Month. Just wanted to throw that out there, too.
Thank you.
For throwing out the months and days and stuff, it was Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I think like that warrants being acknowledged specifically, I mean, just in general, but in Canton in particular, we've been very intentional with regards to two of our nature areas of partnering with the Potawatomi tribes in, they're in southwest Michigan, but really working with their cultural committee and giving them important information about the land and the area and the history, and them participating in the naming of our nature areas, both with Zibowes and with Jeskuitoken. One means creek, which has the Fellow's Creek running through it. One means place of mushrooms, because there's mushrooms on the property. Pretty, you know, that's kind of how the tribe likes to name things, right? But it's really cool, and I think it's, I'm really proud that we do that.
I just want to make a comment... I just want to make a comment on some of the public comments, just to give information. Roundabout was never going to be placed at Sheldon and Ford area. That land was never for a roundabout, that we have not decided what we're going to do with that. We're kind of looking to see what is happening with Ford Road Project. And also in terms of permits, so Emma Kramer, she is our go-to for the HOAs. There's over 250 HOAs in Canton Township, over 250. They have over 250 versions of bylaws. Emma works extensively with them, and she will, she helps them at all times. She sends out notices, she gets phone calls from them, she helps them out, helps direct them. However, we do not have the resources to police 250 different bylaws from all the HOAs. So that's why we changed that policy. But Emma does work with everybody, and our building department is always happy to answer questions. I wanted to also mention that we have, we had a successful fire station open house on Saturday. Chris, you want to talk about that for a second? I know a lot of kids were there and parents.
Yeah, the weather was wonderful, and we had a great turnout, and Kate graced us with her presence there. So we had a great.
It was fun, and I got a pink firefighter's hat.
Right. Good souvenir.
That's right.
Great demonstration of extricating a vehicle as well. So I just couldn't be more proud of all the men and women in the fire department. They continued to shine even in the toughest times. So a big thank you to them, as well as the law enforcement.
Thank you. Also, to let everybody know, so there's going to be Diwali fireworks on October 20th at the Babs Temple right here. And so that's going to be at 10:20, 8:45 PM. We will communicate that to the community. However, I know that a lot of people in neighborhoods like to know when the fireworks are coming so they can take their animals somewhere or be prepared, or any of the veterans that might not like that. So that's going to be this coming Monday at 8:45 PM. Also, today, I was in a crosswalk, crossing Canton Center Road and Summit Parkway, and I had the white go, and someone just zoomed in front of me, you know, and just tried, I mean, just turned right in front of me. So people really need to watch out for pedestrians and crosswalks. I mean, that's very, very, it's very dangerous. So please watch out for people on crosswalks. People on crosswalks have the right of way, especially when they have the white signal to go. And in terms of, so don't forget, on October 22nd, we are having the Domestic Violence Vigil. We also have talked about maybe putting placards in restrooms because domestic violence isn't just the act of, the end violence, unfortunately, which might end someone's life, someone's life or damage to them. But it's also, you know, abuse at home or anything like that. So we're talking about maybe putting some placards in some of the restrooms so people can call First Step or just ask questions, because we talked about doing that in some of our public areas. All right, but thank you very much. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry. Director Byler, Mr. Byler, do you have anything to add? I see, sorry you're sitting there so patiently. Do you have anything to add?
Good evening, everybody. Greetings from Quantico, Virginia. Pleasure for me to be part of this board meeting tonight. Just really to reiterate what the board has already talked about, just the impact of the family and the neighborhood as a whole from the incident tonight. First and foremost, just the hardworking women and men of the Canton Police Department and the fire department, and the exceptional, under exceptional stress, how they performed tonight. My, my support goes to them, as well as to the family. And to anybody that needs help, please go to our website, Substance Use Disorder, and mental health often intertwined with domestic violence, and we have a lot of resources, not only for a person that may be suffering from it, but for a family that may be recognizing somebody suffering from it. I encourage all of them to reach out to us so we can apply those resources to them. Thank you, everybody, for having me.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn? Moved. Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.